My dazzling fellow Toastmasters, Toastmasters Pranav Naam, Toastmasters Shiksha, Toastmasters Sonia, Toastmasters Itay, my fascinating guest, my centering fellow Toastmasters, Joseph Sir, Adash, Mayur, Vidhu, I, Millen Kulakar, Sergeant of Arms, welcome you all to the enchanting and thriving and crossing one and only our open mic of our club 1254322 in area one of division B of district 92. Yes, the one and only speech viewers Toastmasters Club Bangalore. Our club's mission is to provide a supportive and positive learning experience in which members are empowered to develop communication skills and leadership skills resulting in a greater self-confidence and personal growth. Toastmasters have helped people from diverse backgrounds to become more confident communicator and reader. I request you all to uphold the cardinal principle of every Toastmasters meeting. Keep your audio microphone muted at all times except when you are invited to speak. Keep your video on at all times unless you are moving in and out of the room. As an encouragement to every role-takers and speakers, make sure to applaud them virtually. Role-takers and speakers will consciously refrain from expressing their views on sex, politics and religion to ensure the sentiment of audience are not hurt. It is my pleasure to introduce our multi-talented club president of Bengali by heart and soul. Having a Toastmaster for over five years have achieved advanced communication goal, L D E R X, multiple crown awards, currently the club president of our club, the speech viewers. By profession is an associate director in an IT organization. He enjoys speaking, playing guitar, singing and photography. So please join me with loud applause, the one and only Toastmaster Shubhadeep Mukherjee.
Thank you Toastmaster Millen or DTM Millen brother, thank you for that warm introduction and welcome. Now first of all, before I begin, if we begin this open mic, I'm audible, right, Millen sir? First of all, before we begin this journey of an open mic, we have a lot of things in store for you. But before we start, I want to welcome every person today to this, to this meeting because this is special. We will be celebrating our 75th Independence Day tomorrow. And before we begin, I wanted to kickstart this this evening with our national anthem. Just just give me a moment. Adash, am I audible and visible? Okay.
Yes.
Well, thanks. All right, now. Let's come into this meeting, a big round of applause for everyone and thank you every, every person who is present today to join speech viewers in celebrating this this special occasion, this special event. Now, we all have gathered today to celebrate this, this milestone, the 75th year of freedom from the oppression of the British Empire. We all, we all in this, in this audience, in this room, we might idolize a person from the days of independence. We might feel at some, at point of time, the kind of struggle those people went through, sacrifices that people made to hoist this, the tri-colors of freedom. For me, I, I always have idolized a person who was bold, who was stern, was brave. He, he was able to renounce his ICA, the civil service degree in Cambridge upon hearing the turmoil in India. He was also the person who chose the Nobel laureate Ramitabh Nathi God to, for as Chanagana Mana to be his preferred national anthem for the independent India. He was also the person who renamed the Indian National Army to Azad Hind Fort. There is a person who said, one individual may die for an idea, but after his death, that idea will incarnate in a thousand, thousand lives. It's, it's none other than Nataji Shubhasundar. All right, so coming, coming to the meeting today that we have, it's very special. We have three exciting sessions. The very first one is an open mic, which will be a series of external board or as we call in Toastmasters world, it's, it's table topics. The second session is going to be conducted by a division director, Saurav Datta, on why you're toast master, why be a toast master? I get this question a lot rather even in the form you might have seen, why have we see multiple question that why should a person be a toast master? So we have a session by Saurav Datta on that. And finally, a music session to be conducted by Toastmaster Vidhu. What we'll do is we'll also be sharing a feedback link in, in the Zoom chat. So please feel free to add your valuable comments throughout the meeting. And if there are any questions about Toastmasters, about speech viewers, about the meeting, feel free to post them on the chat. With, with that being said, let me welcome to one of the most enthusiastic Toastmasters that I've seen throughout my journey as, as a, as a Toastmaster, it's, it's none other than Toastmaster Adash. Adash, state is all yours.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Shubhadeep. I would like to welcome all of you to today's meeting called the open mic. It is absolutely brilliant to see all of you this morning and believe that a lot of people are going to be joining in very soon, at least from what I hear. Regardless, I'm Adash and I'll be your table topics master for this morning. So for those who are not available topics, table topics is one of those segments wherein you have the opportunity of putting your important speaking skills to test. Meaning you'd be in a position now, you'd be asked a question, if we ask a question, that's why I see someone are volunteering for table topics before I started, that's weird to see. Regardless, table topics, as I said, is one session by you be assigned a random topic to speak about for one to two minutes. Of course, it won't be any random topic, but rather it'll be along the lines of today's theme, which is the colors of independence. Regardless, that is it for table topics. And yes, we also happen to have a timer that will be timing you during the course of these topics. And he will be our Toastmaster Mayur, Toastmaster Mayur. Can you go ahead and introduce yourself as the timer because I don't think you, I don't think you had the opportunity of doing so.
So you would like to make to do introduction, right?
Yeah.
About the timer, okay. Good evening fellow Toastmasters and guests, as a timer for the today's meeting, I will be noting down the various times of the meeting as well as for the table topic as well. So for table topic, I will be giving, I'll change my background as first for one minute, once you complete as a green, then at one and a half minute, I will change it to amber, then where is red card? Here it is, I'll change it to red card at two minute and you will be, every speaker will get a 30 second of grace period for the table topics. And for the rest of the session, I will be like showing in last one, two and three minute, I will be showing green, amber and red card. Okay, thank you so much, over to you Adash.
Thank you very much, Toastmaster Mayur, that was an extended intro. There's another part of your intro that you're still about to tell the audience, but I'll let you know what it is. We'll come to that in a bit. So today I have divided the table topic session into three distinct parts. Yes, three distinct parts, I'm going to read them, I'm going to name them as round one, round two and round three. So the first round is called forming an opinion. That's why you'll be forming an opinion based on the topic that I present to you. And the second round is called find your freedom. That's why it's called find your freedom, I explain what it is, let me get that. And last but not the least, for round three, we actually have a very, a unique segment, something I've never tried before in my dad life. I would call it a mini debate. Regardless, that is table topics for you. I'm going to quickly go ahead with round one. And for this round, I'd like to call on a couple of, I'd like to call on a Toastmaster from this audience, preferably, let me see. I'd like to call on our idiot actor, I'd like to call on an idiot actor, Toastmaster Pranav, Toastmaster Pranav, are you there?
Ah, yes, Adash and there.
Yes, Pranav, I would like you to take up the story, are you ready for it?
What exactly I'll have to do?
Yes, so we have a few rounds and I think this round is called forming an opinion. Now you're supposed to talk about a topic that I give to you. So it is pretty simple, it is same as any table topic that you've ever had before. So your topic goes, are you ready for it?
Ah, yes.
All right, so this is your topic. So there is this common quote that goes around on the internet these days, that goes, the modern generation does not understand the power and value of independence. Let me repeat, the modern generation does not understand the power and value of independence. Do you feel the same?
The modern and generation doesn't understand the power and freedom of?
Independence. So that is just a growing concern nowadays that the modern generation does not understand the value of independence. Is that something you agree with or disagree with?
Um, I totally agree to this and I have my own reason to be to this. As far as I'm a reason why I agree that the modern does, modern people don't understand the meaning of true independence is because um, I feel the way we have been bought up from, right from the beginning, like as a child from the school days, we have been provided everything from our parents. Um, and specifically when we talk about uh, our country where we've grown up, where our parents are so caring and loving and it's not their fault though, but they have provided us everything right from the beginning. So we are in this habit of uh, getting spoon-feeding by our parents, our parents. And when we grow up unknowingly, we don't even realize that our thoughts, ideas or any kind of, for any kind of opinion that we have, it is actually uh, based on a part of a parent's thinking as well. So I think we need to learn to separate the, separate our thinking from a parent's thinking. And I think when we do that, that will mean the real independence for the modern because actually that's when they learn to live on their own. Uh, and live on their own and I think that will be a better future for our country as well because we'll have our own ideas and thoughts, which will be different from what our parents think. And I am very sure that once we have our own ideas and thoughts, we'll be able to work on it and even convince our, our parents also about our ideas and thoughts. And maybe make, make, make a better impact in our country in the coming years with our thoughts and ideas. Thank you so much.
Very much, Toastmaster Pranav, a round of applause on being able to form an excellent opinion on that board because at the end of the day, forming opinions are so important. It's something that dealt with in our everyday life. And I think you have gone ahead and stepped up and taken up the topic and you've given a few non-Toastmasters in the room a glimpse of what it is like to answer table topic. Now that we are there, I would like to go ahead and call on and non-Toastmaster in this room, I'd like to call on Shiksha, Shiksha, are you ready for it?
Oh, hi, yeah, I'm ready.
Yes, all right, so this is your topic. I think you sort of understood what I'm trying to get at. All right. So here's your topic. What does freedom mean to you? Yes, the topic goes, what does freedom exactly mean to you?
Can I take a minute to like think?
Sure, you can take a few seconds. You can take on 15 seconds to think about it and if you're finding it very hard, then I'll obviously be happy to give you another topic.
Okay, I'm ready.
All right, and that's wonderful, you can go ahead.
Freedom for me personally is about girls' education, about women empowerment, about um, the ladies of India, the society of India, having a broad mindset to send their childrens outside to explore the world on their own feet. I mean, not respecting them in any manner, be it in education. So we have come a long way, 75 years of independence and I could still, you know, when I visit villages or rural areas of India, I could still see, you know, girls are not properly educated about sanitation, about the importance of education, about child labor and marriages, like early marriages uh, still happens in the rural part of India. So I think those are the basic things uh, which would build towards a better India. And the true essence of freedom would then only be realized. Um, yeah, that's all, thank you.
Thank you very much, Shiksha, that was a brilliant opinion that you just formed, half of us in this room are even taken away by the fact that you are a non-Toastmaster, but it was truly brilliant, but your honor of applause to Shiksha on stepping up to take up the topic. And that brings me to the third topic of this round. Form, forming an opinion. So now I'd like to call on, let me call on now. I think we have someone from Empire Toastmasters Club that volunteered, so I'd like him to step up and take up the topic in case he's ready. So are you ready to take up the next topic? Okay, I'm not sure in case of his staff, but we'll come back, it's not a problem at all. Now I'm going to go ahead and call on, let me see, I'd like to call on Joseph Sir, Joseph Sir, we'd like to take up the next topic. Yes, are you, am I audible to you?
Yeah.
All right, so this is your topic. Now, most of us are nowadays happy to use fireworks to celebrate festivals, if I'm not wrong. So your question is, is there an alternative for fireworks to celebrate a festival? Is that a, is that an alternative for fireworks to celebrate a festival?
Fireworks is only a part of the celebration. The main object is to celebrate by giving us the knowledge of how we obtained independence to the present generation. Because for me, it is not required because I was born during that time. And I celebrated the first Independence Day in 1947 and I lost my sweet also by putting in my pocket, which has a hole. So however.
Joseph Sir, I think your screen has frozen, I'm not able to hear you.
The, the whole stalwarts were really fought for. The independence also continue in order to, to make know the millennials, how we achieve the freedom so that the knowledge is all, are generated together should pass on and learn from the fact that what are, what is the value of freedom? How to make use of it in our everyday life and how we build up our nation? How we build up our society? And all those things that go with the independence of celebration that we make it to go or meaning because practice is just a part of a celebration like any Diwali. But in the Diwali, the main thing is the puja and other things. So also the Independence Day, the knowledge should be spread, speeches should be given. So that each and everyone, whether educated or uneducated, they will attend the speech. They know how, how it was done, how it was achieved, how India got its glory. Today, you are one of the most, one of the superpowers in the world. All these achievements was given to us by our ancestors, was continuously struggling hard to keep our country up. In every aspect, 360 degrees, I would say, because today we are think that India is in the top level of big nations over to you.
A round of applause for Toastmaster Joseph, because incredible opinion that you just formed on how he was not just focused on fireworks, but rather focused on the event, the occasion and explained the significance of it to all of us. Thank you very much for that presentation. Now we're going to quickly move ahead with round two of today's table topic session. And I called this, give me a minute, I've called this finding your freedom. That's right, I'm going to be giving you a scenario, I'm going to be giving you a scenario of you to imagine. And you have to find a way to, so this scenario is actually going to produce a situation that you wouldn't exactly know what to do. I mean, let me give you an example. Let's say for example that your employer wants you to work on a Sunday. Let's say he wants you to work on a Sunday, but you want to go see your doctor's consult. So how do you get rid of this situation involving employer? So this is a sticky situation and this is something that you have to find your, there's one situation that I have to find it. So that is what it is. I'm going to quickly go ahead with round two and for this I need volunteers, is that even, I'd like to step up and take up this topic. I think we have quite a few people in the room, we have Naveen, we have Pithambra, we have Sonia, Sonia, would I could take up the next topic?
Yes, TM Adash, can please repeat the topic once again?
Yes, I'm not even mentioning the topic yet. So the topic for you, the topic for you goes as follows. It's a scenario that you must imagine and you have to find a way to get out of it. So the question is, you love hanging out with your friends, you love hanging out with your friends. But unfortunately, your husband is not a fan of your friends. And he really wants to spend time with you during the speaking. But you want to go out with your friends, no matter what happens. And one of your friends comes up to you on a Sunday and says, Sonia, I might go out with you for drinks. So how do you convince your husband that you can, how do you convince your husband that going out with your friends for drinks is actually good?
Okay. Okay, I'm stopping now.
Oh, then yeah.
Hello?
Yes, Sonia, you're audible. And meanwhile.
Hi, yes, hi. Yes, yes, Pranav. Oh, really? Are we going to celebrate? Okay, that's great. When? Today only, in the evening? Who else is coming? Okay, Adash is also coming. Joseph Sir, okay. Fine, Vidhu, Vidhu is there or not? Okay, fine, fine, definitely. Okay, so I'll be there, don't worry, I'll be there. Okay, yes, yes, I'll convince him, he is very good, he is very cooperative, very supportive, don't worry. I have to get ready also, you know. Oh. Hello, yes, are you listening? You're always doing your work on laptop. Listen to me, I have a good idea today. You know, today is 14th and tomorrow is 15th. So my friends have decided, you know, my friends of Toastmaster Club have, has decided to celebrate Independence Day. Yes, we are going in Red Fort and we will be going to India Gate and all these places. So they really want you to accompany me, they really want, they are saying that Sonia, if you will not come, no problem. But, but you, but your husband should come, you know. So my friends really want to meet you. Okay, if you don't want me to go, so I will be at home only, but please you go. They really want to meet you, they are very fan of you, you know, they are so much fan of you, please, please. Okay, really, yes, Pranav is also there, yeah. Yes, you look, she look nice to you, okay, fine, okay, okay, fine. So let's get ready, so we are going, okay, so Pakka, we are going, Sean? Okay, so I'm going to arrange a dress for you also. Fine, I'll wear orange, you will wear green. Fine, okay, so yes, so yes, friends. Hello? Hi, Pranav, yes, we both are coming, yes, yes. So, okay, bye, see you. Over to the TTM Adash.
That was an excellent of you representing the entire situation, a round of applause for Toastmasters Sonia. And I'd like to quickly check with our timer, Toastmaster Mayur, you happen to be there in the room because I think you, I think you had closed your, I think you turned off your video, so you're not able to see your virtual background. All right, then I think Toastmaster Mayur is a bit occupied. All right, then, should we be able to take up the role of a timer for the next few minutes, is that possible?
Sure.
All right, then that sounds good, that's perfect. Yes.
Glad you're back.
Oh, you're back, all right, then, thank you very much, our timer is back. All right, then, let's go to the next topic, let me see. The next topic, I'd like to call on Shiva Sir, I think we have Mr. Shiva Sir in the room, so we'd like to take up the next topic. All right, then, sure, not a problem at all. I'd like to call on the person from Empire Toastmasters Club, I think he had expressed his interest in taking up a table topic. So I'd like to oblige, but it's best, are you ready?
Yes.
All right, then, yes, you have to imagine yourself as a student in this situation, remember that. So let's say that you are a student in a classroom of 60 people. And all of you collectively, collectively conspired to bunk the classes on that day. But all, but now imagine a situation wherein all of them evade, but you're caught by your teacher. So how do you convince your teacher that you didn't exactly attempt to bunk the class? Let me repeat my topic, you're a student in a classroom of about 60 people and all of you collectively conspire to bunk the class. And all of you, all the students in your class somehow manage to escape the situation, but you're caught by your teacher. So how do you convince your teacher that you didn't exactly attempt to bunk the class, the stage is yours?
Teacher, teacher, we are here to study, we are here not to bunk your class. We really love you, we know and we respect you, but we want to enjoy our free time. We don't have any free time in our house, we need to study again. My parents asked me to come to the extra course, I need to have a guitar lesson, I need to have a piano lesson, I have to have ballet dance lesson and so many like Uman and to do like math, especially like art also, there are so many things that I need to do in home to have an extra lesson. So please give, give us some time to enjoy ourselves, give us some time to enjoy being together with our friends here. We don't have time to hang out and you know, right? This is not the good time to hang out with our friend because we are in the hybrid situation, we cannot see each other. We have been this in prison for two years. Can you imagine? We are here to see the, the one of our friend that usually to become ours beside us here. It is our in virtual home screen. So it is our time now to enjoy and please teacher, teacher. And please, teacher, teacher, don't, don't give us some punishment. We, we want to run from you, but ask, give us some times to, to appreciate what we have. The time together with our friend here. So teacher, thank you for being our teacher and I, I do hope that my friends here will also listen to you. So please give us like fifteen minutes break before we go to another session. Back to you, T T M Adar.
Thank you very much for that, a round of applause, round of applause, that was absolutely exceptional. If I was a teacher or a probably being convinced, I'm not sure, but we'll find out. Now moving to the final round of today's table topic session, I have called this the mini debate. And I start the session, I need the assistance of a timer. And yes, this topic will involve two people each, that's right. The topic will involve two people each and the both of you will be given a topic to speak for and against. That's right, one of you will speak for the topic and the other will speak against the topic. And then how it will work exactly. Now further, I need two volunteers, I need two volunteers to take up the first topic, let me see. Hmm, alright then, I'd like to call on now Natasha, Toastmaster Natasha, we'd be interested. I think it is T T M Natasha, apologies for that. Could you take up this topic? Alright then, not a problem at all. I would like to call on Toastmaster Biddu, Biddu can take up the next topic?
Yes, I can.
I see a thumbs up from Biddu and now I'd like to call on one of my guests in the room, I'd like to call on Naveen to take up the topic. Naveen, are you ready for this? Naveen, I think I've unmuted yourself, but we're not even able to hear you. Alright then, sure, not a problem at all. Uh, is there anyone that can actually hear Naveen or is it just me that cannot hear it?
You're audible, Adar.
Alright, fine, not a problem at all. I'd like to call on, let me see, I'd like to call on. Hmm, Retambara, I think we have someone by the name Retambara in the room, sir or ma'am, we'd like to take up the next topic. I find not a problem at all. I'd like to call on our president, Toastmaster Shubhidi to take up this topic along with Toastmaster Biddu. Alright then, so it is pretty simple, the both of you will be given a topic to speak for and against. One of you speak for it and the other will speak against it and then how it will work exactly. Now let's say we start with Shubhidi first, we started Shubhidi, then Shubhidi will have a minute to speak for the topic. And Biddu will switch over and speak about the topic, I'm sorry, he'll be talking against the topic for one minute. Alright, and the timer will be timing them on the same. I hope Toastmaster Mayur, you're on the same page as me. Shubhidi will have one minute, then Biddu will have one minute, then we'll be back with Shubhidi again, who will have another minute to refute what Biddu said. And then Biddu will have a minute himself to conclude the entire proceedings. I hope that sounds good. Alright then, that's pretty good. We're going to start with Toastmaster Shubhidi and the topic goes. The topic goes, I want the both of you to listen to me very carefully, it goes homework in school should be banned. Homework in schools should be banned. Shubhidi will speak for the topic.
Adar, I have, I have one, one thing to say, as I will be noting only one minute, so I will be sharing only green card at one minute, okay?
Perfect, that sounds, all of you are good with that, yes, that is perfect. So Shubhidi, you will have to speak for the topic, that is, you believe that homework in schools should be banned. And Biddu, you on the other hand are against it. So let's start with Toastmaster Shubhidi, Shubhidi, the stage is yours.
Well, to begin with, it's a very debatable question, homework in school should be banned. Well, if you ask, ask me personally, I was one of those students who was a back bencher, I never used to volunteer for any activity. Now homework, according to me, yes, of course, at that point of time, it's, it's important for the kids to, to group up, to understand or rather. Showing the class or to the teacher that yes, whatever has been taught, it's, it's a good medium for, for students to portray. But again, if you think back, what I see, when I, I have a couple of students who learn guitar from me. So what I've seen is, they, they get stressed a lot and that's a very, very important factor which we need to understand. See, in school, we spend seven to eight hours, right, and then at home as well, if you do not get time to focus on something else apart from just, just study. Our mind, it becomes enclosed, you will not believe what all things our mind is capable of doing. It's not, it's not about just studying, as a kid, the, the mind has enormous capacity just to expand and, and do wonders. Now, if, if we just enclose ourselves within just figuring out or doing homework, I think that's not entertaining.
Ashwibi, apologies for interrupting, that is your time. Now let's go ahead with Biddu, Biddu, you are supposed to speak against the topic.
Homework and kids. I'll just give one point in this segment and just elaborate upon that. So as much as I believe that kids should give, should be given as much exposure, as much freedom as it is necessary. Because they are growing, their mind is completely free. I want to emphasize on one thing, maybe two, that children have the ability to actually grasp a lot of things. Because that is the age when the human brain accepts a lot of things. And second, the kids actually grow up to survive in a society and society functions in a room. And that's the definition of humanity, you have to add value. And hence, they need to get used to the fact that they have to, you know, learn something. And if we come, compare them to the stress, we can remove the performance aspect of the homework and just focus on the process aspect. Where they are given some task and they need to know that if you are living, you have to add some value. It can be to a teacher, it can be to a fellow peer, it can be to your parents, or it can be to the society in general. And hence, I believe the habit of giving them something and in turn where they are accountable to, to give back. Is something that has to be inculcated early in their life. Over to you.
Thank you very much for that, Toastmaster Biddu. Now coming back to Toastmaster Shubhidi again to refute what Toastmaster Biddu said. The stage is yours, we have one minute.
So I think, I know Toastmasters, Toastmasters do really well. And what you mentioned right now, adding value, right, or making someone accountable. The question is, do you think that doing homework really accounts or make a person or make a kid accountable? Do you not think as a sports person yourself, you are a promoter of extracurricular activities, right? So let's say a student spends seven hours in a day, at night when the person, when it's in the kit. Don't you think his mind should be let go, should be let free and let that, let the kid be, become something else? Let, let, let that kid enjoy, enjoy the time and at the same time the accountability will come. Why burden that person, why burden that little mind with more, more homework? Rather, let, let, let the person, let the kid relax, let it, let it, let the person take it slow. I know we are all behind numbers, getting ninety percent, hundred percent, maybe ninety-five percent below that is, is not something great. But doing homework, I don't think that, that is the only factor which adds value. Adding value is when a person is able to show his creativity, is able to show himself, herself as a person, yes. And I have done, so let's take an example of my understanding, right? We know what kind of person he is and we know what background he has.
That's it, Toastmaster Shubhidi, thank you very much for that. And Biddu, over to you to refute and conclude this debate.
Right, so again, just taking things from that particular line, talking about MSN and sports in general. I again come from a sporting background that I work in a sports company. So I actually thought homework to be in a broader space, it was not necessarily in education. Yes, in school you go to, you get your education and you have to do something as a homework. But even if you are a sports person, there are certain things that you have to do behind the scenes. Take for example, Neeraj Chakrabhan, who have won everything. But he does a lot of homework in terms of his training, in terms of his food habits, in terms of his sleeping habits. So even if you are in any walks of life, be it in education, be it in sports, be it in medicine or even in music section that I'm going to take. I know a lot of people apart from the music classes that they go or the sports matches that they played, do a lot of things behind the scenes. For music people, it might be waking up early in the morning and rehearsing their notes. For sports people, it can be training. For medicine people, maybe researching something during their free time. And that's what I was thinking or meaning when I, I thought of the term homework. Which actually means something which you do beyond what is actually taught in your main area, which can be a school or it can be a playground.
Thank you very much, apologies for interrupting you and that concludes our debate, a round of applause. To both Toastmasters Biddu as well as Toastmaster Shubhidi for stepping up and talking, speaking for and against the topic. I'd like to check with our timer on whether we have more time. I can probably give out another topic, I'm not sure, we have a few people joining in.
Another one, we have some time.
You still have some more time? That is amazing. So we have time for one more debate. I might know how many of you are interested in taking up the next one. We have Mina in the room, we have Trisha in the room. And to give you, yes, I just seen, I, I just saw Mina raise a hand. Mina, to give you a glimpse of what I'm talking about, we are having ourselves a mini debate. Meaning, one of us has to speak for the topic and the other has to speak against the topic. I'd like to know that there's another volunteer, yes, Varun has raised his hand, thank you very much. We have two people in the room to speak for and against the topic. I'd like both Varun as well as Mina to turn on their cameras, so they can, come on, we'd like to see your face today on the event of the Independence Day. Yes, I see Mina's face, I don't see Varun's face just yet.
Give me a few seconds, I'll switch on my video. I need to be ready for that. I'm saying, give me just a few seconds.
Not a problem at all, I think you can probably go ahead in that case. Sure that.
And sorry to interrupt, what is the time duration? Sorry, just dropped in, so.
Yes, I will give the topic and I'll explain the rules along with that, don't worry about it.
Yeah, thank you.
So Mina, you'll be speaking for the topic and Varun, you'll be speaking against the topic. And the topic goes, Mina, you think the national food of India should be dosa. And Varun, you on the other hand, think that the national food of India should be roti. I'm not sure, it's, it's up to the both of you to decide what is right for the country. Regardless, Mina, you'll be starting off to talk about the fact that the national food of India should be dosa. And then Varun will switch over and talk about the fact that the national food after all should be roti. And then, once you are, both of you will have a minute each to speak. And after that is done, the both of you will have the opportunity of refuting each other for another minute. So Mina, the stage is yours, your place is happening. You'll have a minute and we have a timer here that displays the meantime, the moment you reach the one minute.
Dosai idli chapati puri and the menu goes on. What would I choose? What would my friends choose? Definitely, it is masala dosa from Vidyarti Bhavan. To my colleagues who came from Germany, they could not miss the masala dosa from Vidyarti Bhavan in Bangalore. There are other hotels as well, Dwaraka and many more hotels. Which have beautifully delicious masala dosas topped with butter. And of course, other varieties of dosa, like banaras dosa and masala dosa, pani dosa, pav dosa. You name them, you have it, ninety-nine varieties of dosa, people selling it on the road, near the, on the road, on the, near the, on the road. But what dish would you choose? I asked my friend Mishra, who comes from Bihar. Initially, he told dosa, idli and he had a face on his head, by kaukata hai dosa or idli. But when he gave a try, he could not resist the taste of.
Mina, Mina, apologies for interrupting you, the green card is up. Now I'm going to move ahead with Varun now, Varun, you're free to go ahead and explain why the national food should be roti after all. The stage is yours and the timer is white cat and it just played a green card, the moment you reach minute one.
Uh, just so I can interrupt, who's the timer? I would like to ping the.
The timer is Toastmaster Mayur. Yes, Varun, the stage is yours.
Okay. Everyone says that you should go out and food, everything like that. But believe me, when you talk about national food, national food is supposed to be made at the home and each and every individual places. And everywhere you see, roti is the one which is being made at each and every household, no matter how rich they are, no matter how poor they are. Let me give you a small example. What exactly goes inside a roti? It's only two ingredients dish, that's it. All you need is some wood fire, even if, even if you don't have gas, you can have, do it with wood fire. All you need is water and wheat flour, that's it. And believe me, that is the dish which is so beautiful, so flavorful, you can eat it with each and anything you want. Be it curries, be it raita, be it pickles, even beet, beet, ki and shakkar. Oof, you name it, it is so versatile, it is so flexible. And yet, people do think about other breakfasts, why? When you have something so indigenous back to India, which dates back to almost all.
Thank you very much, Varun, apologies for interrupting you, the green card is up. I think all of us can all just start to feel it, if I'm not wrong, the debate is heating up. Now back to Mina again to refute what Varun said and you have one minute.
Why do you forget the beautiful cuisines of India? Padu, puttu, chapati, roti, not just roti chapati, you have even shavge bad, upmas, so many other dishes, dishes. Uh, I, I guess even soji parata or something kind for this cooked in northern side of India. It's not always just wheat and the water that you need to make roti, it's not just the roti, you have other cuisines which has to be explored. India is definitely a country which cannot be highlighted with just one dish. You have people across different regions having different dishes. And that's the custom, that's the tradition, why do you want to nationalize India with just one food item with just roti? Why would you do that when people have different cultures? You come to sou- southern India, you have at the Kerala, you have banana, you have patu. And then when you go towards Tamil Nadu, you have dosa, idli, you have many dishes. But why just roti is the national dish? I don't understand.
Toastmaster Mina, apologies for interrupting once again. I think I feel like such a diabolical person when interrupting the debate over and over again, apologies for that. But now it's time for Varun to refute what Mina's.
See, Mina, you told so many dishes, so many cuisines. Each and every plate you told had a one piece, one common piece, it was roti. You said roti, you said chapati, you said puran poli, even holiye from the Bangalore. Yes, each and every household has a dish which is common, which is roti and it is versatile and it is flexible. Now tell me one thing, isn't the base of each and every cuisine based on only one common ingredient?
No, it is not, definitely not.
You cannot reply.
You asked me, tell me one thing, so I had to reply.
It was a rhetorical question. Okay, it's, it's no worries, no worries. So when you talk about other cuisines, each and every cuisine is indigenous to itself. The very roots in itself are the main thing why the cuisine is built up. When you talk about roti or chapati, wheat is found abundant in India. And that is the reason why we, when we talk about wheat, we talk about roti. And when we talk about roti, it can be a national dish of India and it is quite easy to.
And that is it, apologies for that, once again. I'd like to thank all of you for participating in today's debate session, I'm not exactly sure as to who won. But that's something for all of you in this room to decide, but before I close this off, I'd like all of you to give yourselves a round of applause. For having stepped up and taken up a topic and presenting it to the best of your abilities. It was truly amazing of you and I cannot wait to see you at our meetings, we meet on Fridays at five P M. And that is up to you to select. Thank you very much and that is me, Adar, your table topics master for this morning. I'd like to hand it back to our M C Toastmaster Shubhidi to take care of the session.
Hey, Adarsh, thank, thank you, thank you. And I think that was really interesting table topic session. I'm not to bet Toastmaster Adarsh, let's have a big round of applause for our table topic master. It was really something else. Alright, now moving on to the next section that we have planned for today. And like I was initially mentioning that I received a lot of questions in, in the form that was there. That why should a person become a toast master? Why should I even come and join a meeting every week for one, one and a half hours and spend time? What kind of value add does Toastmaster bring to us? Or let's say, what is ROI that I'll be getting out of investing X amount of money? And so these kind of questions, right, I used to get them a lot, especially when I was part of a corporate club. And this, this was the exact question I got from my, from my H R when I reached out to them, asking to fund for Toastmasters. So what kind of ROI are we, are we going to get? So keeping these questions in mind, I have a very special person to take us through on why Toastmasters. It's, it's our very own, our division director, Toastmaster or the D T M Sarav Datta. Welcoming Toastmasters Sarav Datta, the stage is all, all yours.
Thank you so much, Toastmasters Shubhadi. I hope I'm audible, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
Great, okay, uh, let me start with a question, how many of you know swimming here? Can I see a raise of hands? Okay, one, two. Okay, Shubhadi, when and how did you learn swimming?
That was a long time back, someone pushed me actually and. That's, that's a very funny story, someone pushed me. My father was there, he taught me at that point. That was a very bizarre experience.
My father was there, he taught me at that point. That was a very bizarre experience on Hawaii then. At the swimming pool, no, no, it was in a pond and someone pushed me and my father taught me then after that. So it took me about a month to learn swimming.
Hmm. And then what happened? He took you to the lake or the swimming pool or to the.
They took, they took me to the, so there was a nearby pond, no swimming pool as such. He used to teach me for fifteen, twenty minutes or more, or not an hour.
What would you do there?
He, you know, immediately the first step that I used to do is I should breathe under the water. That was the very first thing that he taught me.
Okay, okay, great. Anyone here who knows driving? Okay, uh, Toastmaster Adesh.
Yes, Toastmaster, sorry.
And how, how did it happen?
So I started riding my motorcycle not so long ago. It was only a few months ago and I've sort of mastered it now. And if you can remember, I also asked you for a few tips.
Okay, so, uh. When you learned driving, how did you learn driving? Like, what was the, what were the steps? Like, uh, was it a driving school or someone helped you learn driving, uh, someone like a friend or an uncle or your dad?
What happened, uh, what happened was that my brother was helping me out and he sort of gave up on me. And then my dad sort of took up the, uh, task of teaching me how to ride a motorcycle and I still didn't learn properly. So I had to start doing it myself. I, I started doing, I started doing it properly when everybody gave up on me.
So, this is the most important thing that I wanted to drive home. This particular point is that whether it's swimming or it's driving. One of the things that you would have noticed is what Toastmaster Shubhdeep mentioned. He actually had to get inside the water to start learning swimming. Toastmaster Adesh literally had to sit inside a car and start playing with accelerator, brake gear, the steering wheels. When he was sitting on a bike, he had to actually start learning how to do a balancing by sitting on a bike. I don't think anyone ever has learned driving or swimming by watching a TED video. I don't think anyone ever has learned driving or swimming by standing by the side of the road and watching other people drive. I don't think none of us can learn swimming by sitting beside the swimming pool and watch other people swim. Why? Because there are certain things which are skills and when those skills have to be built in ourselves. We need to practice that hands-on. We need to get inside it. We need to get our hands dirty. And this is what holds true for any skill that we want to learn. Now compare that with something which is more of a, you know, a, a technical skill set or a technical, uh, a technical knowledge. For example, learning Python or R. Even in those cases, you will still need, you know, data science, for example, you will still need to do hands-on. But then, there are certain things which you can watch a video and which we can have, for example, you know, some kind of emotional intelligence. It is okay for you to watch a few TED Talk videos and understand what's emotion intelligence is all about. Stress management. But there are certain survival skills which we cannot learn unless and until we are actually getting inside it, we are getting our hands dirty. We are getting into the thick of it. And that's why Toastmasters. Toastmasters is a platform where you get a chance to pr- to, to practice what you need to know in terms of communication and leadership. By actually participating in it. What are the alternatives that we have to learn in communication and leadership? You can do a course on Udemy or Coursera or any other MOOC curriculum. But how will that work? How will reading a theory about delivering public speaking help you become a public speaker? How will reading a theory of how best leaders have led their teams help you become a better leader? To become a better leader and a better speaker, what we need to do is start leading and start speaking. How many of your managers are in a decision-making role or have been in a decision-making role in your company? Okay, so, uh, Toastmaster Joseph. When you were in a decision-making role and in your department. I believe you were in engineering, if I'm not wrong, Toastmaster Joseph. Did we lose you?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, so you were in engineering, if I'm not wrong, correct? Yeah, so in your department, if you were hiring someone, say for example, I apply for an open position. And you asked me that, Saurav, have you worked on this particular engineering skills before? And I said, never. On a scale of one to five, how, what is the chances of you hiring me? Five being you'll, you'll absolutely hire me, one being you'll never hire me.
First of all, education is the most important in the engineering.
Just a, just a very quick response I wanted to this question. On a scale of one to five, if I say that I have never practiced engineering. Would you put me at a one or at a five or somewhere in between?
I'll put on one month.
One only. Now, welcome to the other side of Toastmasters. This is the other beauty of Toastmaster. You may never have done a speech before, you may have never done an evaluation before. You may never have done public relations before. But yet, this is the only platform where you will be encouraged to come and participate and do things which you have never done in your life. If and only if you are keen to learn and you have the interest to pick it up. Okay, I'm wrong. Not even that. Even if you don't have that keenness to learn at this point of time. The intent here is to build that keenness over a period of time. We have several Toastmasters who are not keen to speak because they feel that they are not good speakers and they will never be a good speaker. But when they keep on participating in meetings, meetings after meetings after meetings and they see people speak. They also build that confidence in themselves that I can also speak. In Toastmasters, we believe that the worst speech that you will ever give is better than the speech you will never give. Which means that the moment you are going to start speaking, you have already started building that particular skill set. Toastmasters is the only organization where you will be allowed to play the role of a V I S president, public relations of a club. Or the area P R manager of an area, or even the district P R manager of a district, even if you don't have any experience in P R before. If you are ready to invest in your learning, if you are ready to invest in building yourself up the curve. Toastmasters is a platform which will give you that opportunity. You know, there, we always have this struggle. In, in my roles, I've also had the opportunity to hire a lot of people. And when we hire people from campus pressures or people with, you know, zero to two years of work experience. One of the questions that we ask them is, what leadership skills do you have? Now think of this, a coder with two years of work experience, what leadership skill would that person have? All that person is doing is wearing a hoodie, taking a tall cup of coffee, coming and doing the coding. So what answer does this person give to this question? Some people talk about their N C C days, some people talk about their college function, some people talk about, uh, you know, some kind of an event they did for the apartment association. That's the closest proxy that they can get, something which very few of us can relate with. Now compare that with something like Toastmasters, a global organization, a global fraternity which is known the world over. Three hundred thousand Toastmasters exist across the world as on date. And this is not a rolling count that I'm talking about. If I take the rolling count, I mean people who have been Toastmasters earlier and not a Toastmaster, active Toastmaster right now. This number would probably be anything between, you know, maybe, maybe five hundred thousand or six hundred thousand or even more. So those many people are there across the world who know what Toastmasters is all about. So in the absence of any tangible leadership skill or any particular experience that you can showcase, this is a very good proxy. I'll pick up one example of someone who's there in this group, in this meeting I see right now, Toastmaster Nancy Goyal. So Toastmaster Nancy is the Educom lead of District ninety-two. Which means that she plans all the trainings that we have for District ninety-two. All the club officer trainings, the district officer training is something that she drives. Now tomorrow, if she's applying for a role where she needs to arrange training for hundreds of people. Do not, do you not think that this would be a very credible point for her to put forward in the table? Saying that, yes, I have the experience of arranging training for hundreds of people. And the proof of the pudding is the club officer's training that I have done for more than, you know, five hundred Toastmasters in my district. Now compare that with her saying that I have arranged a local function at my club. Which club, what function, no one knows. So to sum it up, what I am talking about here is that Toastmasters is important because of three reasons. Number one. Communication and leadership is a survival skill and all of us need that. Whether we are engineers, doctors, professors, scientists, soldiers, we need these two skills. And there is no better way to learn these skills than to actually practice them. You cannot practice public speaking if you don't have a public to listen to you. And today we live in a world where even spouses are not ready to listen to each other, right? So there, how do you find a public that you will speak to and who will listen to you and also at the end of it give your feedback? So that's the first reason. This is a platform where you can come in, get your hands dirty, get into it and start practicing it. Not watching TED Talk videos of brilliant speakers. Trust me, a million times you watch Steve Jobs, you will never be able to speak by, with him like, like he does. For the simple reason that you were not speaking, you were only listening to. You may become a great listener, but how well will you become as a speaker is a big question mark. The second thing what I talked about is that Toastmaster is a platform where you don't have credentials to participate. You need to have the intent to participate, the willingness to participate. And the third thing I talked about is that Toastmasters is a platform which is acknowledged and recognized the world over. So in the absence of anything tangible in terms of leadership, in terms of communication, this is a very good proxy till the time. You actually reach there. Some people say fake it till you make it. I don't believe in that. Because once you are caught, you are a faker for once, you're a faker forever. I would say bake it till you make it. And Toastmaster helps you bake those skills over a period of time. So that when you get that opportunity walking in through your door, you're not unprepared. Because trust me, this is not like cooking an instant noodles in two minutes. You cannot build your public speaking skill over a two-month course. So if you think that in two months I will start looking for job, so I will prepare for it two months down the line, no. There is no instant formula to that. You think you will memorize a speech, you think you can memorize a particular topic. But that will only save you on one occasion. You do not need to be lucky one of the hundred times. When it comes to communication, you need to be lucky and you need to be good ninety-nine out of hundred times. Maybe once or twice people will pardon you. Apart from this, there are other things also for which Toastmasters is of great value to a lot of people. One of this is, and these are some of the things that we really don't talk about. For example, decorum. Toastmaster meetings are a very good platform for you to start practicing time management. We start the meetings on time, we follow an agenda. We, we have a particular set of time for people to speak. You know, if you, I know there is a green card that's going to come up in some time and a yellow card is going to come up in some time and a red card that's going to come up in some time. So that is going to keep you within a time discipline. Otherwise, someone like me can keep on talking for the entire day and the night and the next day. So, if you have to manage your time, this is again a good platform for you to come and speak. Another very important thing, decorum. In Toastmasters, we practice something called Robert's Rule of Order. Which is basically the parliamentary procedure that we follow when we are conducting a meeting. So this meeting or any other meeting for that matter of Toastmasters is called a deliberative assembly, as per Robert's tools of order. Deliberative assembly means that certain rules, certain protocols has to be followed. You will see an absolute decorum in the meetings. It is not like a group of five friends catching up and everyone, you know, kind of slapping each other at the back of their head. This is a very structured, serious format and the seriousness comes in from the purposefulness that we have in the meetings that we conduct. So how are you behaving in this meeting? How are you conducting yourself? Are you speaking out of turn? Are you stopping someone else from speaking? Are you barging in when you're not supposed to? All of those things are important lessons that you need to learn when you are entering the corporate space. If you are someone who's getting started fresh in their career. If you're already someone who's there. And if you feel that there's nothing for me to learn in Toastmasters, think again. I have been a public speaker since twenty-ten. I joined Toastmasters in twenty-twenty. Ten years after being a public speaker and I'm, and I'm saying public speaker is just not that I would go and catch a random group of friends and speak to them in a bar over a beer. I'm talking about international conferences which I've chaired, which I've been a keynote speaker in, which where I've moderated panel discussions, I've been paid for those assignments. I wanted to share this with you at the risk of bragging because it is important for you to understand that for someone like me. Who has been into public speaking for a decade, I still found a lot of value in Toastmasters. One of the biggest values I found is in terms of taking in feedback and the ability to give feedback in the nicest way possible. This was a huge struggle for me. I've been, um, in various leadership positions in the corporate world for almost twenty years. And during this tenure, one consistent feedback I've always received is, Saurav, take it easy. No one comes to work to fail. So if you have to give a feedback to that person, give it so that that person can rise, that I never could understood. How can I give a feedback to someone in a nice way if the feedback is not nice? And this is something that I learned in Toastmasters. The hardest of the feedback, the point, the most pointed feedbacks also we give in such a way. That the speaker does not walk away saying that, never again. The speaker walks out saying, when is the next chance? And that is very important because we are not here to put you down. We talk about Toastmasters pride and you know what we take pride in? We take pride in the fact that if we're there in an unknown city, in an unknown group and there is one Toastmaster. You know, there is one person by your side and that's all about Toastmasters pride. So all Toastmasters and guests, please think, what we do here is not a random group of ten, twenty, fifteen, thirty, forty people. Sitting together and just, you know, kind of, uh, talking and talking and talking. What we do here is building the core skills which make us better individuals, better professionals and better human beings. Thank you. And if you have any questions, I'm ready to take it.
There is one question in the chat from.
What is the, what is the most memorable as a newbie Toastmaster earlier in Toastmasters? So my, uh, my Toastmasters journey has been pretty eventful, not in a good sense necessarily. So I chartered my club, uh, the Chakla, I became, I became a Toastmaster by chartering a club. Uh, some of you may know the name of this club. The name of the club is the Gab East Toastmasters Club. Uh, the club was chartered, um, so on twenty-second of August, we had decided that we want to charter the club. On twenty-third of August, we got payment of twenty-three people. Uh, so that was the eagerness that we had from the people who wanted to join the club. Now, still we could charter the club only in eleventh of September because of various reasons. Within one week of the club getting chartered, our president, um, left. He decided not to continue in office. And, uh, within, uh, one, two months of that, our V P P R left. Within another one month, our V P membership left. We had two club mentors. Uh, I have not, I have not seen any of them. No, sorry. I saw one, one of them only once. And the other one, I don't even know who that person is. And basically it was, you know, we were thrown into the water without knowing exactly what are we doing there? Should we be swimming? Should we be floating? Should we be looking for a handrail? We had no clue. And my, and, and all of us were absolute rookies, okay? The twenty-two of us had no experience in Toastmaster. And that is when I realized and I will give a lot of credit of the whole of it to, uh, the past area director. I think some of you will know him, Toastmaster Shino Babu Gunappa. He was the area director and he had told me, Saurav. Leverage the fraternity, leverage the, the power of Toastmasters. And what I got in return, it was mind-boggling. You know, I started visiting clubs all over the world, all over the world. And the kind of learning I had. I mean, clubs taught me everything from how to be a grammarian to how to become an evaluator, to how to conduct meetings. Ninety-nine percent of the content that I delivered today, it is plagiarized and picked up from someone across around the world. And there is no way I can give them credit because I don't even remember the names. I'm like a selfish magpie, go, going around and absorbing all that you guys have to offer. So, my best moment as a newbie has been getting into Toastmasters, knowing nothing about it. And surviving. I never thought I will get more than six months, but then yeah, it's almost two years now.
So there is another one from Toastmaster Adesh. When did you get this epiphany that Toastmaster is actually worth your time? And how, how has this changed your life?
Okay, so I have this very glorious distinction which I think none of you will have here. Is that I have participated in all format of the speech contest and I've come last at the club level. And I repeat, I have participated in all formats of the speech contest, humorous speech contest, evaluation speech contest, international speech contest and table topic contest. And in each cases, if there was six people, I was sixth, if there were five people, I was fifth. So that is how I fared at the. So that is how I fared at the club level contests. I am a very bad loser. I am a very bad loser. When India lost to Pakistan, forget about me, when India lost to Pakistan, I had actually, you know, gone around the house banging my head, fisting here and there and did all kind of drama and melodrama. So that was the kind of person I was. Today, I don't feel that. One of the best things that Toastmaster has taught me, how to become, how to accept a loss or a defeat gracefully. And that has been my moment of epiphany. Because after that, when India started losing matches again, I never felt angry. I did feel sad. For example, in the World Cup when it happened, I was very sad, but I was not angry. I was not angry at the opponents, I was not angry at the Indian team. And this is a very big realization for me. That was my moment of epiphany. That there is much more to learn than public speaking here, as I said, a better human being.
It's another interesting question, I think we can take one more, yeah. Just a lighthearted question since you are in Toastmaster for a very long time and have been a public speaker. So which one do you cherish the most, delivering speeches, evaluating or mentoring any other member or any other aspect?
Okay, when I, I, I know it's a lighthearted question, but I don't know if the response will be lighthearted because see my, I will, I will still say and I am not trying to be heroic here or trying to take a moral high ground, it's a reality. My most cherished moments are those when people go up on stage and they speak. People who have earlier not been able to speak and I have so many such examples of my mentees who actually had struggled to even, you know, have the basic communication going. Getting started with a meeting, getting, picking up a timer role or an hour counter role. Those people are now going on and becoming pathbreakers, they are complete, they are doing sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, twenty speeches. Including speeches where it is eighteen to twenty minutes long, it's not easy, it's very difficult. Taking questions from people, answering them with confidence. Maybe they are still stuttering, stammering, pausing and that's totally okay because they are still learning. But that really literally gives me goosebumps. When someone, one of my mentees and I have, as I said, like I have this very, I, I have this, this credit that I lost in all formats of the contest, but at the same time, I am also a very proud mentor. I have mentees who have been district champion in, in international speech contest, in, in evaluation speech contest, table topic contest, area level champions, divisional level champions, district champions. So yes, I may not be a great contestant, but I do take pride in, in giving District ninety-two and the Toastmasters fraternity some of the most brilliant speakers and that is a moment that I really cherish. When my mentees go up there, pick up the trophy, give that winning pose and then they thank me. I know they are just being nice, but that's okay. I can still feel good about it. Thank you. Back to you Toastmaster, Toastmaster Shubhadeep.
That was really encouraging, Toastmasters, so I really loved hearing your passion about Toastmasters, what topic speaking and very rightly said that if you are not there, if you are not doing it yourself, you are not just listening to great speakers. It's not, you will never learn how to speak on stage, it's all about doing it yourself with a very good style, taking that challenge up. It's really, really important. A big round of applause for our, for our, for the, for DM Sorav. And I will also be sharing the feedback link once again on the chat. If you have any feedback, any questions as well for Toastmasters Sorav, for me, for anyone in Toastmasters, feel free to share, share them. I will share the link once again. Well, that being said, we are finally there at the last section of today's meeting, which is very interesting because we have a couple of music performances towards the end. And for that, I will be welcoming Toastmaster Bhitu Das to conduct the session for us. The stage is all yours, Toastmaster Bhitu.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Shubhadeep. If anyone asked me, Bhitu, what talent do you have, I would have proudly mentioned, I am a part of Toastmasters. Yes, in the last two years of being a Toastmaster, I believe it is a talent in itself. It is an amalgamation of public speaking, leadership, PR feedback and so many other attributes which our division director touched upon a while back. But once I was a Toastmaster and I networked with individuals within this family, I found out there are many such individuals who have talent beyond being a Toastmaster. Many of whom are champions in different other walks of life. Today, it is time to have a sneak peek into those other but equally wonderful talent. Since this segment is all about talent, I will waste not an iota of time and start inviting eager and talented individuals who are going to mesmerize us with their talent. The first participant is Kanak and she is going to play the National Anthem on guitar. I request the audience to maintain proper etiquette and posture during her time on stage. Inviting Kanak, the stage is yours.
Hi everyone, my name is and I will be playing Kannanamun on the acoustic guitar. And thanks to, to the Deep sir, I'll be able to play. I hope you guys enjoy it. Thanks everyone.
Thank you so much, Kanak. You have wonderful while you played the guitar. For the unworst, I want to tell you, Kanak is actually a student of our Presiding Officer, Toastmaster Shubhadeep. Kanak, can I again call you back on stage? Can you tell a little bit about yourself and how did you fall in love with guitar?
Uh, well, actually, I moved from US to India when I was around eight years old. Um, that, we had an option to any instrument. And in the US, I didn't have that option and I chose guitar. And in school, I really enjoyed playing because I really liked listening to songs and there are many songs I liked guitar. And from that, I started playing and I slowly got better. After that, I would play the harpy and then I started taking classes from Sothe, Sothe Deep sir. And after that, he taught me like chords and different notes and melodies and that's why I love playing guitar.
Thank you, thank you so much, Kanak. Now let me see who are the, so I request everyone who is in this segment just to turn on the video while you are performing so that we can see you. Okay, so the next person I am inviting on stage is Toastmaster Srivatsa. Toastmaster Srivatsa is from Bangalore, CA's Toastmasters Club. Now, if Toastmaster Got Talent segment deserves someone, it has to be Srivatsa. Let me tell you how talented Srivatsa is. Apart from pursuing his articleship at GP Pi Associates, within Toastmasters, he is the VP Education of Bangalore, CA Toastmasters Club. He was a runner-up at national level talent and best presenter competition. He is a Bharat Natyam dancer who have performed five hundred shows in Bharat Natyam Pan India. He is passionate about blockchain industry. He composes Kannada poem and the same has been published in his own blog, Manada Adarsha Nudimutugal. I don't know if he stopped at this much talent because he felt it was enough or he became considered towards me and thought I might just run out of fingers counting his talent. Today, Toastmaster Srivatsa is going to bring before us Carnatic music. In words of Srivatsa, Carnatic music is very close to his heart and has the power to eliminate all else. Inviting on the stage, Toastmaster Srivatsa.
Thank you, Toastmaster Bhitu. Am I audible?
Yes.
Uh, today I am going to render a patriotic song on this eve of seventy-fifth Independence Day. I hope you all enjoy it. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Hidayadolu spandi suva bhava vunde. Hindutva venala da mula mantra, i punya bhoomi gade, jeeva yantra. Hindutva venala da mula mantra, i punya bhoomi gade, jeeva yantra. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Gama papa mapani nee papani nee saas. Saani papa nepa mama, gama pa gama pa ga sa. Gama papa mapani nee papani nee saas. Saani papa nepa mama, gama pa gama pa ga sa. Namma prachina teya, shrishtha tamasamskateya, ravikiranavishvavanee belagute ho do. Saani pani pama pama gama ga sa, gama pa ni sa. Namma prachina teya, shrishtha tamasamskateya, ravikiranavishvavanee belagute ho do. Vividatay ole kataya samarasada samhitaya. Adarsha janamanavabey seyote ho do. Adarsha janamanavabey seyote ho do. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Sagaga mama papa ni nee saas, saani pani pama pama gama ga sa, gama pa ni sa. Sagaga mama papa ni nee saas, saani pani pama pama gama ga sa, sa sa, gama pa. Charitagantida sakala duritagala kalmasavavum manadi na vindhu, neegisoona. Charitagantida sakala duritagala kalmasavavum manadi na vindhu, neegisoona. Taratamada abhedagala twaritavagali sutale, jaagrataya kahalyanu molagisoona. Taratamada abhedagala twaritavagali sutale, jaagrataya kahalyanu molagisoona. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Hidayadolu spandi suva bhava vunde. Hindutva venala da mula mantra, i punya bhoomi gade, jeeva yantra. Hindutva venala da mula mantra, i punya bhoomi gade, jeeva yantra. Ek aatma bhara tada shata koote kaya gala dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde, dhaman yolu vukkutthi hane tarunde. Thank you.
Thank you so much, thank you so much, Srivatsa. Everyone, can you just drop a emoji in the chat box or in our screens to show how wonderful Srivatsa was? Thank you so much. Srivatsa, do you remember the first time you got introduced to Carnatic music? And do you like to share it with us? Like how did you fall, fall in love with this kind of music?
Yes, uh, it was the day I was in my pre-KG's where we used to have a bajan session going on Yama House and I used to go there and just sit and do. Though I don't know how to read, I used to sing which was mentioned because I don't remember exactly. That, that's the place when my journey started and in my pre-Ks, I started with Carnatic music and it has come till here.
All right, thank you. And as I mentioned, you are multi-talented and we only have time to see one of your skills. But if you want, you can actually drop the link to your blog post of the poems that you write. If anyone is interested in reading the poems that he has composed, they can go to the link and check out his poems. You are free to drop in your blog post and on the chat box.
Sure.
Now moving on to our next participant. Here's the thing, the next participant is Toastmaster Dixita, she is from Tivo Toastmasters Club. But before I invite her on stage, I want to play a little puzzle with the audience. The puzzle is to guess the song based on the hints that I drop now. The hints are in your chat box. So the song is going to be from a movie which is recently released and is part one of a franchise. The movie has actors belonging from south, but the movie is widely loved Pan India. Yes, Shubhadeep, you have rightly guessed the movie, can you guess the song? The movie is correct, can anyone guess the song from the movie that she is going to sing? All right, let's, let's, let's discover. Trisha, you are, I think, correct, but also since you have mentioned, can you guess the, can you guess the language she is going to speak? Because it's a Pan India movie and the songs are in all languages. Can you guess the language that she is going to sing now? I can see some people typing, so Hindi, okay. So let's, let me welcome Toastmaster Dixita and put all your doubts or all your guesses to rest and see what language, what song and obviously what movie she sings. Over to you, Toastmaster Dixita.
Thank you, Toastmaster Bhitu. Uh, you all can hear me, right?
Yes.
Cool. Sare zamana hai mere peechhe, par ye divana hai tere peechhe. Sar ye jukhne na dun dunia ke aage, par tere payal dekho karke sar nache. Na davan na hira banna mujhko hai bas tere banna, ek chalak tere aankhon me wapas ja jaaye. Parvai kar pura divama, shree malli peeche kalyaniragama. Parvai kar pura divama, shree malli vasam, kasturi vasama. Tere saheliya sadha ma mooli, uske muqabre thodi tu bali. Jaise hi solva chad jaaye savan, tu kya har ladki dikke phulong ki kali. Banj pelipti laal saari wo bhi dikte raj kumarii, jumke bindi aaj gajre se rupne kar jaaye. Fir pe chupen bangarama yene, shree malli maate mani kya ma yene. Chupen bangarama yene, shree malli naume navratna ma yene. Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Toastmaster Dixita. You are wonderful and you can actually see some of the messages that have been dropped in the chat box. Appreciating your high notes, some are in love with your voice, some are in love with the way you presented the song. Absolutely wonderful. I just want to just quote Elton John here. He had mentioned music has a healing power and it has the ability to take people out of themselves for a few hours. If you have not taken us out for a few hours, but definitely for three to four minutes. So all the best with your singing, I hope you continue singing. Now, I would like to invite our fourth and final participant in this round. She is Trisha and, okay, I'll not, I'll not tell what she is going to present or what she is going to sing. I'll keep the stage open to her and let's discover. I'll keep the stage open to her and let's discover. Over to you, Trisha.
Hello, my name is Trisha and today I'm gonna be playing a patriotic song which everyone knows. It's called Janakana Mana. Which is written by Ravindranath Tagore and is our National Anthem. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Trisha. By the way, your camera doesn't let us see you. We can see your wonderful attire. You are totally properly dressed for the occasion. May we see you a little bit? Or I, I can see a painting. Do you also paint on your behind as a painting?
Yeah, I paint, but that's a wallpaper.
Sorry, can you be louder?
That's a wallpaper. It's not, it's not a painting.
Alright, alright. And also, are you a student of our Presiding Officer, Shubhadeep?
Yeah, I'm a student of Shubhadeep sir. He is the one who stopped me guitar.
Alright, so if in our audience, anybody wants to learn guitar, you know who to reach out to. Just advocating for our Presiding Officer, Toastmaster Shubhadeep is a great, great, he is a guitarist himself and he has actually trained a lot of people. So with this, I am, so the people who have volunteered in this round have been over. If anyone is interested to present, I can see Joseph sir raising his hand. Joseph sir, what would you like to do?
I would like to sing a Hindi song of Kishore Kumar. It's a old one.
No problem, sir. The stage is yours. You can go ahead.
Tu me yaad hoga kabhi hum milete. Tu me yaad hoga kabhi hum milete. Moho bachra ho me milke chalete. Duba ho gamki gairaiyo me. Sahara hai yaadon ka tanhaiyo me. Duba ho gamki gairaiyo me. Sahara hai yaadon ka tanhaiyo me. Sahara hai yaadon ka tanhaiyo me. Tu me yaad hoga kabhi hum milete. Na ye dil ki dunia bataana sakunga. Jo bhole ho tumho bulana sakunga. Na ye dil ki dunia bataana sakunga. Jo bhole ho tumho bulana sakunga. Jo bhole ho tumho bulana sakunga. Tu me yaad hoga kabhi hum milete. Moho bachra ho me milke chalete.
Thank you so much, Joseph sir. I always knew you could sing and I did not understand why you did not give your name in the first place, but I'm happy that you volunteered in this round. We had one more request, but we are actually running short of time and we have to add that to the time because people have other commitments. So Anshum actually is a singer and if anyone wants to check how good she sings, I have sent a link to everyone on the chat box. The link that will direct you to one of our videos of Anshum, so you can check that out. Um, I'm really sorry, Anshum, we ran out of time as I would have loved to have you on stage. So this was all from my segment on behalf of all the talented participants and my own. I thank you for being, I thank the guests for being so encouraging towards this segment. We appreciate you from our bottom of the heart. Thank you and over to you, Toastmaster Shubhadeep.
Thank you, Toastmaster Bhitu. Yeah, really, that was something really, really wonderful and first of all, I wanted to thank everyone. I, I started off with a thank you note, but beginning we did not have every guest at that point of time, but now really want to thank each and every person who could make time this Sunday to join us in this special meeting dedicated to the 75th year of independence that we will be celebrating tomorrow. I truly appreciate your timing. I truly, um, I'm, I'm not sure how to put that in words, but I really want to thank each and every person for, for joining us today. In addition to that, I've shared a feedback link in the chat as well. If anyone has any question, maybe from the session with sort of that touch for us or anything that you want to learn about speech viewers, that's our club. We meet every Friday for our meetings. Please feel free to ping, to raise a question on the chat. We'll be happy to connect with you. With that being said, before we close for, for today, I wanted to again request Joseph sir, our most senior Toastmaster and one of the most enthusiastic person today to come on stage once and, and address the audience and close the session for today. Over to you, Joseph.
Good evening. I would say good, good afternoon, all the Toastmasters and distinguished guests. We, the speech viewers, have really organized such a wonderful event on the, in the presence of distinguished audience and added a great memorable moment in Toastmaster journey. In this session, there is a takeaway of so many things, including the speeches and also the performance by the esteemed club, team, work and efforts. This event is really in line with the 75th anniversary of our independence. Overall, there has been so many great in a interaction session and each one of us have been able to get with some sort of takeaway with everyone. Today, a lot of learning experience has been shared today. The thoughts of inspiration and motivation are all led to move along with us outside of our lives of the Toastmasters. So I thank all the participants and all the audience who have really enjoyed this session and it will be a memorable session until the next Independence Day to come. Thank you and God bless you all. Over to Toastmasters Shubhadeep.
Thank you. Thank you, Joseph sir. And with that being said, I would request everyone to please come on video for, for a picture before we, that's, that's a tradition that we follow at Speech Viewers. Uh, Bhitu, can you take, take a picture for everyone? Yeah, DTM Sol Datta, Happy Independence Day, definitely. Would request you to come on video as well, huh? We all love to see you. You are an inspiration for all of us, all of us.
Alright, three, two, one, go. Yes, I have taken the picture. Thank you so much.
Great. Thank you once again, everyone, for making time. Uh, just a quick note about our club. So we started, uh, this, this meeting was conducted by Speech Viewers. We meet every week on Friday at five o'clock Indian Standard Time. If you have any questions about Toastmasters, feel free to drop in my number and others, you can just drop your number. He is a BP membership. If you have anything regarding Toastmasters, drop in as a guest, see how the club functions and likes how DTM Sol Datta says. It's very important for us to take a plunge, to do it ourselves, because if we just listen, we don't learn. Even, let's take a simple example, right? We all love to listen to music. We all love seeing people perform. We saw Swastava, you know, performing really well, right? But once again, if we want, we cannot just listen and play or listen and do stuff, right? We have to do that. We have to take a step and that's how we are also in the stadium. We start performing. So, so public speaking, it's difficult, definitely. But we need to take that plan. We need to start speaking, take that ownership and perform. With that note, I have a very happy Independence Day to everyone and thank you once again for joining Speech Viewers on this special occasion. Thank you, everyone. God bless you.